Go ahead and call a meeting to order, if you would, please rise. This time Pastor Kenny Comstock at Crossroads will lead us in our invocation.
Absolutely, thank you. Would you pray with me? Father, we are grateful, grateful for the opportunity to gather freely. We thank you for the blessing that you've offered in our life, the blessings of health, the blessings of success in our community, and the blessings that allow us to fulfill the callings that you've placed in our life. So Father, we know in the scriptures you teach that we should submit ourselves to the governing authorities in our life, to these city officers, and in particular, I just pray for your blessing on the, on our mayor, on our assembled council, and the employees here in the city. We pray that you would grant them wisdom, pray that you would give them confidence in what is good and fitting. We pray for the ability to work together in harmony, and even when there's an honest disagreement. Father, we pray for personal peace in their lives, for joy as they accomplish the tasks you place in front of them. And we just set the agenda that's been published before you today and ask for your wisdom and grace. Give us assurance that we follow you and continue to improve the great city we have the opportunity to live in here in Odessa. Thank you, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. This time Councilmember Sprols will lead us in the pledges.
Let me point out something about the pledge of allegiance. There is no comma between one nation under God. There is no comma, no comma on the Texas pledge between one state under God, so there's no reason to hesitate. We're one nation under God, one state under God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual, liberty, justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one individual.
If I could have Jesse Rodriguez to please come forward. We have a proclamation in celebration of National Garbage Manday. It's a City of Odessa proclamation. Whereas National Garbage Manday began in 2012 to show community appreciation for the local men and women of the garbage sanitation and recycling industry. The earliest garbage regulation efforts began in 3000 B.C. when the first landfill was large holes dug for refuge. Since that time, garbage and sanitation workers have worked tirelessly in all weather conditions and at the risk of themselves to provide sanitation services to protect us, help our environment, prevent disease, and keep our community clean, safe, and beautiful. The men and women of these waste management industry work hard to process, filter, and recycle millions of tons of garbage. The City of Odessa values and celebrates all the trash collectors, haulers, sewage workers, street cleaners, sanitation workers employed to serve residents. Now therefore, I, David R. Turner, by the virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Odessa, do hereby proclaim June 11th National Garbage Manday.
Congratulations.
As the mayor said, this was founded a couple of years ago to recognize our solid waste workers. It's now gone nationwide, now worldwide. So it's a good recognition for our solid waste workers, as the mayor said, to keep our streets and alleys and clean. Believe it or not, we picked up 18,000 containers in two and a half days. So with 35 drivers that we have in Solid Waste Department, men and women, they did an outstanding job, and I just want to say thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, could we have our solid waste team stand up so we can give you a round
Now we will move to the consent agenda, and I believe there is one item we need to pull from the consent agenda.
I move, we remove letter F from the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now we need to approve the rest of the consent agenda, so I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Now a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now item F, consider rejection of bids for overflow basin liner. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you Mayor and Council, appreciate the opportunity to discuss this with you. I mentioned it a little bit last week, but I wanted to make sure and convey it this evening. We're requesting to reject the bid. However, it is not because it is a bad bid. We, we find that it's a fair bid. The contractor gave us a good quote, and the contractor is Onyx Construction. They, the, the issue that we ran into was that we inadequately assessed the scope of the project that we needed to do, and so when we asked you for funding last year, we were short. We asked for 65,000. This scope is, is closer to this 321,000 that the bid came in, and so we don't have sufficient funds to proceed with the project. But we will reassess the scope over the next year and see, see what we need to do coming in the future.
How much? Are we short again, Mr. Kerr?
I'm sorry?
How much? Are they short?
We were, we were short. We were 65,000. The bid came in at 321,000.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion to reject this bid.
So moved.
Second.
Now a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The other council actions, consider adoptions of the water and wastewater master plans. Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, we have for you tonight the consideration of adoption of the water and wastewater master plans. You have at your locations, the, I gave you copies of the water master plan. The wastewater master plans were shipped to Lubbock, so I did not receive them today. But, so I apologize for that. We will get you those hard copies. The plans have not changed at all significant, in any significant way from the previous talks and presentations that we've had. I have a short presentation where I can touch through those again for you. But the wastewater master plan, what we have done is we've, we've reviewed the spelling and some of the text and things like that, and there may have been a couple of those things that we, we did address, which were noted. But the plan in itself is essentially the same as what you've seen. So basically, just want to touch on the aspects of what, why we did this, and of course, the purpose of the master plans, provide for the optimum use of the funds for the long-term sustainability of the system. That's really what we're doing the master plans for us. Where do we meet our needs? How do we use our money? And make the best projections for those things. We want to, so we identified our system needs in the plan. System needs that had to do with new development based on growth projections, so significant portions of the plans are associated with the growth, the massive growth that we are seeing. Rehabilitation of aged infrastructure, so all of our structure, infrastructure is aging, and so we're working to, to, we, we need to make sure that we do rehabilitate those things as we go. Forecast our scheduled needs, so how do we make these improvements and what kind of a schedule? Develop our cost projections, and then put that together into a capital improvements program. This is a living document. It's not exact, and it will, we, we want to modify it as we need to. Things may change. We may want to swap one project here or there, or we may have a need that comes up that we, we're not able to identify at the time. Sometimes these lines decide to start breaking without our, really knowing which one wants to do it. But, and it should be updated routinely. This is the map of the capital improvements that we identified in growth for the water system. And you'll note, kind of in the red, it's not easy to read, obviously, at this scale and everything, but in the red up top is north, the northeast area, we're seeing growth in that area, so we have some major trunks we're needing to do, and a, an elevated tank that we will need up in that area. The southwest side additionally, we see growth out towards the Halliburton area. We have a hard time maintaining enough flow in that area to, for the new development that's coming on. So we're looking at running a major trunk down the west loop and then along I-20 so that we can service those needs.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes, sir.
This green line down here at the bottom, that loops around, is that the loop we're looking at, or?
The, the dotted line, and colors.
Okay, that's the loop.
The dotted line on the, the very far outside line is what we call the extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Okay.
And so that's the extent of our study at this time. As you will see, that area is not projected to have much occurring in the short term. It's not identified as, as prime growth in those areas at this time. But that's, that's the, the current, or the coming extraterritorial jurisdiction for the City of Odessa. That's more associated with our 2020 census. I think that's the five mile line. Right now, our ETJ is three and a half miles. I can't remember for sure if that's the three or a half or five, but I think that's the five mile line there.
Thank you, sir.
And so this is a copy out of the book of the projects that are identified for, for need. If y'all can read those, you're doing better than I am, but, so we have a five-year project of major projects. That's that northeast area and the southwest area that includes some pumps and pump stations, as well as the tanks and major trunks. Then we have a second table which is projecting out to 10 years, additional needs after that timeframe. And then the longer table is a projection out to 25 years. By the, these tables will, as you go five years out, things will probably change, so you would update these tables, and they may look a little different at that time. The 10-year projection is probably the most, as far as you would want to think about in terms of reliable numbers and things.
And again, Tom, this is just for new development. This doesn't even include the existing infrastructure, correct?
Yes, sir. This is entirely for new development. This is the pressure we're seeing from the northeast and the southwest, and so this does not identify, or this does not include dollars that would be, that will be needed to rehab aging cast iron lines and those types of things, which there are significant numbers in the city.
Mr. Kerr, I know that in the five-year capital improvement plan, and you've already mentioned it, there, the recommendation is for, on the northeast part of town, a 2 million gallon storage tank, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
What is the life expectancy on tanks like that? I mean, I know we have some others around town, and I don't know where we are on those, on replacement, or what is their life expectancy?
Those tanks are really, as long as you maintain them, and you, from time to time, you'll need to go in and repaint, you'll have to sandblast the paint off and then, or blast the paint off and then repaint. And then you can rehab the structural components if they get to be a concern, but generally, a tank is expected to last 70, 100 years.
Oh, wow.
And so you don't, don't typically just replace them very often.
Okay.
So this map is one that kind of identifies some of the rehab work that, that we're looking at, and, and we'll kind of demonstrate the cost numbers that we were looking at in a minute. But when we talk about rehab work, what we did is we went through, our consultant went through, Kim Lee Horn did a very excellent job for us on this project. And they go through, and we identified mains where we're seeing leaks, and they quantified, looked at the quantity of leaks and the sections of lines and that type of thing. Helps you kind of prioritize that those lines are the ones that you're seeing, your major concerns with. Cast iron is our number one issue. It's the older lines, and so those, we've identified significant needs there, and so that, that's where we plan to emphasize any funds that are available for rehab. We'll go after the ones that are showing the most stress to us right off. And so this is a table that's in the, in the study, identifies the areas that we saw rehabilitation need. And again, even if we do set funding for this type of projects, we want to emphasize that we don't want to tie ourselves to this list specifically, because there may be a line that becomes more critical, and we would, we would want to move it up, so. This is the wastewater system, similar to the water system. This is a growth map. You, you are aware that the line P and line Q, we've come to you for design on those. Land Draft Crutch and Associates is designing those, those lines for us. That serves all the way up into the northern Parks Bell area. We, line P will come up from the Darrington up to Business 20 at Faudry. We have a major lift station there. Our capacity on that lift station is just about, about as far as we can go. And so if we don't get line P up there, we're going to have a difficult time adding more services to the, to the system. And then line Q will take that trunk on up to the Parks Bell area, because the capacity of the trunks within that area are also starting to be exceeded. And so this, this allows us to continue to grow in the areas. You'll see a red line along the loop. That again is because if we start to grow on the west side of the loop, then we're going to need to increase our capacities and abilities there. And we are extending sewer out to the southwest. So the primary projects we have going right now are the line to the southwest and the line P and Q going up to the northeast.
How many pipelines do we have to cross?
Just the line P segment, as I remember, and John probably has a better number than I do.
Forty-six.
Forty-six?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, okay.
Still counting on Q.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause you said there were like a 90-something, didn't you, on Q, or?
Easily be.
I think somewhere around 70 on Q.
Seventy.
Probably 90 between the two.
We do, we do find that a challenge, and for all of us. And so this is the tables that would be the 510, and, and that's part of the 25-year table, the next sheet would have the, have the 25-year projections. And as we've discussed before also, we have two costs shown there. One is what we would normally consider the costs to be, or projected for the projects. And then the, the column on the right is, is based on local conditions where we're starting to see exposure to a lot, a little higher expenses. And so that's about a 50% increase on the, on the normally projected cost. And so that's the second part of, or the last part of the 25-year, and then they identified a few projects that, that they're forecasting beyond 25 years. It's not a whole lot of benefit to try and look beyond 25 years, because things just are going to change quite a bit by the time you get there. And so this is a, kind of a map of the rehabilitation work that we're looking at on the sewer system. Primary focus on this one right now is we have some asbestos cement sewer lines. Those lines are, are, they're just like the old concrete lines we used to use in sewer systems. We've pretty much taken all the concrete out now, because there wasn't any left, but you had to replace it with new pipe. And so the same thing is happening with asbestos cement pipe, and just as it has the word cement in it, it has a similar type of component that degrades in a sewer system. And so we've got a few miles of that. The, the, the thing about that is that it's failing at a rate that is really critical for us. We really need to get it out of the ground, because I don't think it'll last 10 years, you know. It, we'll, we're, we have to go out there and replace it fairly frequently, and so sometimes we need to replace taps. A lot of people have orange bird pipe. Okay, orange bird is a, is a pipe that was very prominent at one time. It's really a, kind of a carburetor or a paper type pipe, and so it's like a wood in a way. And so it was resistant to gases and that type of thing, but over time, it weakens. And so a lot of people have service lines that are orange bird, and you have to, and they're really starting to fail now. And so if we have to go out and make a new tap to replace that orange bird, it's kind of hard to tap the AC pipe when there's not any top to the pipe, and so it's hard to connect to it, but anyway. So the other thing that will come up is, is clay pipe. Clay pipe has been in use for, you know, since the Roman times, I guess you'd say, but ours aren't quite that old, thank goodness, but they do, over time, can wear, especially if they're under traffic conditions and things like that. Vibration will tear them down, so. That's another system that we'll really need to start to emphasize, but this study concentrated mostly on the AC pipe. And so there's a table on rehabilitation needs for the wastewater collection. So that's pretty much a touch back on, on what we've talked about. If there's, we'd appreciate your consideration and adoption of the plan, or if you have any concerns, we can certainly readdress those.
Okay, any questions or concerns from council?
So what do you expect going into this 2020 census? Do you expect that to significantly change, any?
The 2010 census, the population for the City of Odessa was less than 100,000. When you are over 100,000, your ETJ moves from 3.5 miles to 5 miles. That's the only thing that, that, that I'm demonstrating, but it, we definitely, would be my, my expectation, I think, I'm not the expert on this, but we, we would think that we're in the 125 to 135, 135,000 range, somewhere up there.
So it's going to be a significant?
Yes, sir.
Increase? Gotcha.
And that's within the city limits.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Kerr.
Any other questions?
Tom, the, the rehab cost would be done through our operating budget, right?
It, we haven't identified which way we would do that yet.
Okay, okay.
Tom, on behalf of council, thank you very much for your diligence on this. When you're looking at numbers this large, they become a little intimidating.
Yes.
And to be able to budget for it and see the problems that are coming down the road really help us.
Thank you.
And so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Now a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr.
Next, we'll move to the public hearings. We'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by Reorganized Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Mr. Brenley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tim McDaniel, one of our planners on staff, is loading the presentation here. Related to this first case, the city mailed out 27 notices. We did not receive any returned notices, and we did receive one written protest. The property involved in the request is located at the northwest corner of University Boulevard and Ventura Avenue.
Thank you, Tim.
The site is currently zoned single-family three. It is occupied by a church, and land uses in the general area does consist of residential development. The applicant and the property owner in this case is the Reorganized Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and the purpose of the rezoning request from a single-family three to neighborhood service would facilitate neighborhood support services development on this property. The proposed rezone to neighborhood service is a most restrictive zoning that would allow the proposed development, and in this case, it'd be a restaurant, to be placed on the property. The planning staff does have concerns with the proposed development's effect on the nearby residents, and this would be related to the smell, the sound, and the traffic that's generated by restaurant use. A variation of the proposed neighborhood service, or neighborhood service zoning would allow for a flexibility of the church for the sale of this property. The church has reached a stage to where they no longer need the property, and they are going to relocate and then sell this location. The Planning and Zoning Commission did express similar concerns as the city staff related the impact that restaurant development would have on adjacent properties, and they did give unanimous approval to a zoning change request to Plan Development Neighborhood Service with following conditions, that development standards, which would include building setback in height, lot coverage, parking, things of this nature, would meet the standards and, that are set in neighborhood service zoning, as called for in the city zoning ordinance, and the land uses would include all the uses that's allowed in neighborhood service, with the exception of a restaurant use. So it would still allow things like a dry cleaner, a convenience store, small retail development, which would include like a gift or apparel shop, anything that is a traditional neighborhood service, but it would eliminate the restaurant to minimize any impact to adjacent residential properties. And be happy to answer any questions.
Could you explain for the public, Mr. Brenley, what S43 means?
I'm, I'm sorry, could you repeat?
What S43 means? Could you explain that to the general public?
Oh, SF3 or?
SF, I'm sorry, SF.
SF3, that stands for Single Family Three Residential District.
The three stands for?
Three stands for the minimum lot size. Minimum lot size in SF3 is 6,000 square feet.
Okay.
If it were SF2, just as an example, minimum lot size for that is 8,000 square feet.
Okay.
And the subsequent number does determine various lot sizes required in the zoning districts.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir, for that.
Yes, sir.
Also, did you say there was one response in protest?
One protest, as indicated by the P right across the street, it's shown on the map there.
Okay. Specific, I mean, was there any?
There wasn't any specific, it was just a protest. There wasn't a reason, you know, just, just.
They gave no reason?
No, just protest.
Just woke up grumpy that day.
I guess so, yes, sir.
So, so you are saying that your recommendation, recommendation in planning and zoning's recommendation would be to approve this to change to neighborhood services with the caveat that it could not, with the exception of being a restaurant?
What we're recommending, that it be, instead of a, a standard neighborhood services zoning, we recommend it be a planned development neighborhood service, and that would necessitate a site plan approval, which the city staff would have a little more, and the council would have a little more control over as far as development standards, but it would also include development standards that are required in the neighborhood service, and it would limit the uses to what's allowed in neighborhood service, with the exception of a restaurant. That would not be allowed, and that would minimize impact on the residential property in the area. And the main reason that we're recommending that, the property situation is good for a neighborhood service, being adjacent to a major street and on a corner like that. However, the main concerns and, and complaints that the staff receives on a restaurant is what we said, the smell, traffic generated, the noise, things of this nature. So that was our concern with the proximity to existing residential development.
Do you, do you think that the, the 27, the 26 people that did not protest, do you think they didn't understand those concerns?
Uh, that's.
I mean, no, they didn't have a, they, we, we sent out 27 notices and got one protest, right?
That's, that's pretty much standard response that we receive on a lot of these. If it was very controversial, then we'd have a lot, you know, have a different response, but this is pretty much standard, Miss Dean.
So does the church have a potential buyer that wants to put in the restaurant? Is that who's requesting this?
I think they do. I think they do. It wasn't told us who it was, but I think they did.
And so the church just wouldn't like to see a restaurant?
Well, it was discussed at, at Planning and Zoning Commission for the, you know, for the planned development, and the church was reluctantly agreeable to that. They said it wasn't an ideal situation, but they could agree to the planned development neighborhood service.
Okay, are there any more questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, and we do have one citizen who did fill out a card, James Cothran. If you would, please come forward, sir. And you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Only three?
Only three.
Well, I'm glad for that. My name is James Cothran. I hold the authorization of congressional financial officer for the community of Christ, who is Reorganized Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints since 2003. I live right here in town, have the last, about 34 years, I guess it is now. First became acquainted with this property in 1975, when I moved here from Missouri, seeking work and found it, so I stayed. As with any church organization... As with any church organization, always facing crisis after, one after another, with attrition of membership, et cetera. We would not be trying to sell the property at this time had that situation not be facing us. So we have petitioned to change this zoning, as we say, from the SF3 to, as it is designated on the amendment to the petition I filed, to PDNS, if I've got it right. And hoping that that will facilitate a timely sale of property. We have had the property on the market with an agency for the last year, and have only received value offers of around 55% of the county assessor, what do they call it?
Appraisal district.
Assessor?
appraisal.
Yeah. Appraisal. And that's way low. So we're looking to look at this as an opportunity to increase the sale value. At this time, we do not have a buyer. We had an interested party or two, but things with it as a residential zoning have precluded I saw this property for many years as a user of the property and not as a seller, and been last year looking at it from a seller's point of view, and been looking at the entire neighborhood. And I've come across some automized things to hear of, I've observed within that community that I'd like to share with you. You may already be aware of it. Between West County Road and Loop 338, there are 11 residences in this residential district.
How many, sir, again?
Pardon?
How many did you say again?
Eleven.
It's eleven. I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Eleven residents?
Yeah, there are 11 residences with driveways on University Boulevard. Of those 11, four have a front yard to driveway. The others are just driveways to a garage, but not a University Boulevard address. There are several other residences with addresses on intersecting streets. But from what I could see, there's only four homes in that area, and happen to all be in the same block, that have a residence address of University Boulevard.
Okay.
Everything else on the street is churches or other types of.
Sir, your three minutes are up.
Pardon?
Your three minutes are up.
Can we request that he continue? Any of the council members?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I make that motion? Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Mayor, continue then. So as I say, the use of University Boulevard is not necessarily and mainly residential. It's more oriented to other types of services, as we're petitioning to have our zone changed. And the fact that University Boulevard in the years past was 2020, it still came, has that designation, and has a 55 mile an hour speed limit through there, in a residential area. I know my street has a 30 mile limit with a 35 on either side of a park. The street is, has no street-side curbside parking. So it's, whatever goes there, we'll have to have a parking lot. If the property is sold to a non-tax exempt entity, this is gonna put money into the city or the county from the taxation. If it goes to a commercial buyer, it'll expand employment and revenues, et cetera. So that's a benefit.
If I might ask a question, are you, are you in agreement with the move by the P&amp;Z Committee?
Am I?
Are you in agreement with what they're trying to do with this property, what the P&amp;Z Committee has come up, their recommendation?
Are you okay with the planned development?
As I'm understanding it, I would like to see it go where I could sell it to anybody that falls within the description.
Right. And doesn't this, this include everything except for a restaurant, is what I'm understanding?
Yeah.
Is that correct? Are you okay with that recommendation that?
I will accept it.
Okay, okay.
I do not really, really, I would rather have that opportunity to have the full access of the range and scope of the designation.
Well, and I think that that designation does, if I'm not correct, Mr. Brenly, except for a restaurant.
Restaurant, yeah.
So I think that would.
Now, that's the only thing that excluded from the full scope.
Okay, okay.
But I would like to see it, because I know that, you know.
Sure.
A good bona fide investor that would invest in property for
Sure.
business, commercial use
Sure.
would generate a greater sales price than selling to a local
Sure.
church.
Well, I would definitely recommend then, as far as that's concerned, what P&amp;Z Committee has come up with, Mr. Brenly, is we make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cothran.
Next, we will open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by
Yes, sir. The city mailed out four notices related to this case. We had no notices returned. We did not receive any written protest. We did receive one written approval related to this case. The property involved in the request is located northeast of the corner of Troy Avenue and University Boulevard. Site is currently zoned planned development retail. It is vacant. The applicant and property owner is XTX Associates, and they are represented by Newton Engineering as an agent. And the purpose of the rezoning request from planned development retail to light commercial would create a common zoning for the entire property that's owned by XTX, and it would also facilitate development of a commercial enterprise on this property, which would be an automated car wash. The proposed zoning is not contrary to the established land uses in this area. Retail and commercial development is all on the adjacent properties. It's across from the HEB and just up the road from West Loop 338.
Thank you for that, Mr. Brenly.
Yes, sir.
Because I was trying to give my bearings.
I knew you were gonna ask.
Yes, sir.
And it, it is a, not contrary to the city's master plan land use, it is an appropriate zoning for property that's adjacent to a major thoroughfare, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request to light commercial. And the planning staff does concur with this recommendation for the zone change, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Brenly?
I do. What's the difference, what can you do on light commercial that you cannot do on planned development retail?
Well, in this planned development retail, it did not allow any type of commercial development. This was one of the original, or early planned developments that the city incorporated back in the late 70s, early 80s, and it was very restrictive on the uses that were allowed at the time. West University was a lot different atmosphere and street at that time, and the uses in that planned development were very restrictive as far as what could go on there. And the light commercial is, circumstances have changed, and it's more appropriate to have that and to allow the car wash on this property.
So there are other light commercial facilities around that?
Yes, ma'am, there are.
Okay, other questions? Okay, well, this is the public hearing, so I will open up the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Item four, open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request by Odessa Housing Finance Corporation. Mr. Brenly.
Yes, sir. Related to this case, the city mailed out 32 notices. We had two notices returned. We did not receive a written protest, and we did receive one written approval. The property involved in this request is located east of the intersection of Fitch and Lamisa Street. Site is currently zoned general residential. It is vacant. Land uses in the area do consist of residential development and vacant land. The applicant and property owner in this case is the Odessa Housing Finance Corporation. They are represented by LCA. And the purpose of this rezoning request from general residential to special dwelling district would allow for a smaller lot widths, and this would accommodate more affordable housing, and in this case 12 lots to be situated on this site. The proposed rezone request is not contrary to the established land uses in this area, nor is it in conflict with the city's master land use plan. The proposed zoning district will be located near other single-family residential development. It will be an infill development, and it will consist of affordable single-family homes. And just as a side note and for information for the council, there is a separate property to the south on this map. It's about where that NS is located. That's also owned by Odessa Housing Finance Corporation, and that will be coming before the council in, for their July meetings.
Can I say this, Mr. Brenly? Have you been by there recently? There is a double-wide trailer on this location.
On this location?
Well, I believe on section 12 or 13, I believe it is, one of those, unless I'm just mistaken, but.
I think it's a little bit north of where this location is, councilman.
Okay.
I believe so.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, and it's new. It was just placed there, and cement was poured for the driveway.
Right.
You know, the whole nine.
Yes, sir. I do believe it's just here. This zoning district that they're going to
Yes, sir.
that would preclude mobile homes from being located.
They will?
Yes, sir.
They'll exclude it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time I will open the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Brenly.
Thank you, Mr. Brenly.
Next, we'll open a public hearing to consider the amending the boundary lines of the five single member districts. Mr. Landers.
Mayor and council, this ordinance, by your action on this.
You will, you'll take the city limits that existed on January 1st of this year, January 1, 2019, and allocate all in any land inside the city limits that hadn't previously been placed into one of the five single-member districts into one of those five districts. The map and through the prior discussions we've had, you already know, this includes the land that was annexed last November, but also some additional land that just hadn't been allocated from prior elections. And significantly, this is actually adding small pieces, parcels of land to all five of your single-member districts. This was approved by the council on first reading back in February, so this is the second and final reading.
Okay, are there any questions from council? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I will open up the floor for anyone who would like to comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next move to miscellaneous, I believe we have one appointment.
For the Permian Care MHMR Board of Trustees, reappoint Margaret Jones.
Okay, we have a motion.
So moved.
Make a motion. Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes unanimously. I do not have any more citizen comments for non-agenda items, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we stand adjourned.